All right, I'll call to order the meeting of May 12th, 2013 for the East Hampton Planning Board.
We can open it. Since we're all here. Can I get a motion to open that?
Second?
All right, we're open. All right, is there anyone here to speak to something that's not on the agenda for tonight's meeting? All right, approve our minutes from the April 28th meeting, do you guys have a chance to look at them?
Yep. I have a changes.
I have a couple typos that I can give to Jess, but other than that, it looks good.
Did you want to call them out, or?
You want me to go through them?
No, no, just give us the afterwards.
I motion to approve the minutes with the minor changes to be delivered by Jess.
All in favor? Aye. Opposed? Abstentions? All right. If nobody objects to any, we should probably do the special permit application before we jump into the ordinance. Does that make sense?
Yeah.
So, Dave McCutcheon for 103 Lovefield Street? Come on down.
Do you want this opening up?
You guys want it open, or you guys want it small?
Please.
My name's David McCutcheon. I live at 263 Sylvester Road, Florence, and I'm the manager of National Floors LLC, currently located at 150 North Hampton Street, East Hampton. I'll read to you the application I made to the city pertaining to tonight's meeting. To whom it may concern, National Floors LLC's current location is 150 North Hampton Street, East Hampton, and is presently under deposit from Cumberland Farms, who are seeking the location where I am presently. The location that I'm presently looking for, for myself, to move out of 150 North Hampton Street would be 1-3 Lovefield Street. The old Bert Ford tractor building. National Floors is applying to locate in the 30 by 100-foot brick portion of that building, which was most recently occupied by Sign Graphics, and I show it on the paperwork that I brought with me. Basically, before Sign Graphics, Bert Ford used the portion of the building that I'm looking at for both sales and warehousing. It's a one-story brick-faced building, basically 30 feet wide and 100 feet long. National Floors itself is a 100-year-old business that sells both wholesale, retail, installs and repairs, maintains floors and carpets to both the public and wholesale We approached and complied with all the current codes that we think is available that applies to the application tonight. Any signage that we use, if we are approved for that location, will be okayed by the Building Department, get their approval, and it's noted on our plans where we would locate it, subject to his approval. We employ three full-time employees and three installers at the current time. Deliveries to our business averages three to five deliveries a week, one trash per pickup per week. In summary, we have little or no impact on traffic. We'll be using town water and sewer. Our presence would be an improvement to the building, which is currently vacant, and any improvements on the outside will happen as we can afford to do it. We look forward to continued National's presence in the community, which has supported us and our employees for over 65 years. That's it.
What work of this outside stuff here, is that stuff that needs to be done with the parking lots and things, or is it as-is?
It is as-is.
Okay.
There's a parking area here that is currently paved that'll have seven parking spots that we determine what's needed for the size of the building and my use.
And I have a note that it's 3,000 square feet, is that right?
Right, 30 by 100.
And every 300 requires, a gross floor area requires a parking spot?
That's for the retail component only, since he's split the business between retail and warehousing, it's one space for every thousand square feet for the warehousing, so...
But you've got a gravel lot there, too, that's got another seven spots.
Yeah, exactly.
So it should be...
More than that.
Okay, and you mentioned deliveries, three to five a week. What about the installers going out, anything like that?
Yeah.
Is there a schedule for what happens for that, or how frequently you got people leaving?
They come in before nine, leave before nine, and that's usually it.
Okay.
They pick up their day's work.
So really, it's pretty minimal.
Yeah, I was thinking of actual deliveries of product.
Yeah, okay.
Yeah.
You guys have any other questions?
I made a comment to the signage and said that...
Right, did you see the comment?
I saw it from Jen Gracia.
Yeah.
Yeah, and I addressed it with the landlord, who turns out that he didn't want something there anyway, so it's a done deal.
Okay, all right. Is there anybody else here from the public that'd like to speak about this?
I think this all seems appropriate. I would motion to approve the special permit at 1-3 Lovefield Street.
Was that a second? Check.
Middle second, check.
Check. All in favor? Aye. Any opposed? Abstentions? No.
Thank you.
All right. Appreciate it. Thank you.
You're welcome. So, I'll try to get the decision, turn around as quickly as possible, and then, once it's settled, the city's first, it's 20 days to a period. All right. Speak today.
All right. Now the moment we've all been waiting for.
Let that be a trend for the rest of the meeting.
All right, we'll open the continued public hearing for the proposed...
I'm sorry.
I'll...
What time is it?
It's 7:00.
They don't have them?
No. We'll reopen the continued public hearing for the proposed zoning amendment for the building size provision. The Planning Department has prepared a new draft for May 7th, based on our previous hearings.
Is there extra copies up there for members of the public if anybody needs it?
Maybe one.
There's one.
One left?
I can make more.
There you go. Any more members or committee members have comments about the latest draft or questions?
Maybe Jess can run down some of that changes.
Well, it's everything that you asked for. So, the definition for gross floor area that was proposed changes, so you'll see the new language in bold italics, and the language to be deleted is strike-through through it. The building size cap for retail uses was changed per your request at the last meeting, so it has a purpose statement. It's applicable to retail and service uses in the downtown business, highway business, and neighborhood business zoning districts. There's exemptions for the redevelopment of existing commercial buildings over 50,000 square feet, educational uses and solar uses, and the size cap is for no building to be occupied by a single commercial retailer, so it's the 50,000 square feet. Language was amended under the planned business development to reduce from five acres in size to three acres in size. And then, there's language added under the planned unit developments for mixed uses, saying that the building size cap will be applicable for those developments, and language for the transfer development rights as well. Under the table of uses, convenience market, strike-throughs for requiring convenience markets in the highway business district to be permitted only in planned business developments. This means that convenient market, we just need to meet the minimum lot size for commercial uses. It also amends the permitting process to go from the ZBA to the Planning Board in the downtown business, highway business, and neighborhood business. And then, under table, this is 6-1, this is four-dimensional standards, so they were changing the planned unit development for mixed uses, requiring 10 acres, going down to five acres, and planned business development going from five acres to three acres. And then, striking out general business, since that zoning no longer exists on our zoning map.
All right. Can I ask you a question about the exemptions with the redevelopment of the existing building? Is the idea, I guess this is probably better put to all of us, is the idea that an existing building could redevelop it without tearing it down, but you couldn't tear it down and rebuild something? So, seeing what the concept...
That was the intent, it was to make sure that a 50,000 square foot building can still be redeveloped.
Can still be rehabbed and used, right.
But if that's unclear, then that means that the zoning language is unclear, and it should be clarified in some way, shape, or form.
I think it's probably clear, huh?
Yeah, makes sense to me, yeah.
Does anybody else have any other questions on the Planning Board?
No, I think that it's a lot clearer.
I mean, my only thought, Jim, you had raised earlier at a hearing that whether or not we should go higher than the 50,000 and keep it there, and I did boil a great some points about that. I don't know if that's something we want to discuss, or what people's thoughts are about that. I mean, I...
I mean, I would open it, and maybe you could bring it to the crowd, but I still feel that 60,000 is a more appropriate number than 50,000. I also said in our early meeting that I felt they're pretty close, so I want to be cautious not to find a bone here when we're really narrowing in on what I consider a successful mission, that I think a little bit more, a little more room to move is a better thing overall for the community.
I have to say that I agree with that, and I would like to go even higher, but I was thinking near 70, but I don't like the 50,000. I wouldn't vote for the 50,000. 60 or better is, I think, would be...
Okay.
I've got a question.
Yes, sir?
With the land that the town has right now, or the developers have right now, whether it be Mr. Corbin's property, or Mr. Boyle's property, or Mr. Gold's property, what's the largest building we can build on these properties today?
They're probably looking at me, but I'm 15 minutes...
If that was narrowed it down.
Well, it's going to depend on...
On the size of the lot.
It's going to depend on the size of the lot, it's going to depend on stormwater, it's going to depend on lot coverage, it's going to, it's got a lot of, it depends. It's going to depend on what the use is, it's going to depend on what the parking requirements are for that use.
So, there's no way of answering that, I don't want to tell until somebody actually applies for a permit or something?
I can't tell you what the biggest building could be, because I don't know what the use is going to be, I don't know...
Well, say it was retail.
If it's retail, then we'd have to, I mean, it's all, I can't, I can't, I can't do that, I'm sorry.
It's a different process, you would have to...
That's why they have development teams, that you have an engineer and an architect and, you know, there's...
I just got this curious guy.
Jess, we can only do most of that, and not right now.
I was looking for a number, I mean, why make it more than it can be, you know? I mean, if it only can be 60, well, I'd pass them for 70, or whatever.
I can't give you a number.
You know what I'm saying?
Makes sense, yeah.
Single, sorry, single floor, 85,000, asking for nothing on 12 and 1/2 acres. That's asking for no variance, no nothing, by the zoning codes, 85 hundred square feet, with no asking for nothing but your blessing. How does that work out?
It works out good.
How much is 85,000?
85,000.
That's one floor. If you have parking, if your grocery's different, because you got to have such a large square footage for parking. I have one question to ask you, Jessica.
Don't ask me, the board is in charge, not me.
Hold on one sec. Do you guys have any other comments, or playing order questions at this point? Ordinance?
Well, my only concern is if we start looking at changing the size of the building again. I wasn't present at the previous meeting, but I do believe that they've changed some recommendations for the lot sizes, going from, looks like 10 acres down to five acres, and five acres down to three acres. If we were capping it at 50,000 feet, I certainly think it's appropriate to make those reductions in lot size, but if we're going up to potentially 75,000 square feet again, then, you know, I would want to revisit the discussion around, you know, what size lot is appropriate for that size building. It's kind of opening it up again, Jeff.
That's my worry, and pushing it too hard, you know?
All right, should we open this up? Sure. Hold on, Dave.
I want to address the 65,000.
Can you hold on with it?
Let Dave go.
Oh, all right.
Yeah, I'm jumping in on purpose, because Jamie had mentioned that I had asked for that, and I did, but I don't even feel any threat, but I'm more than fine with 50,000 square feet, I just wanted to throw that out. I have a thing I'll ask for after my turn, but it's no small, but before I made a stink about 60, 65,000 square feet, and I'm happy with 50.
Okay.
Yeah, so, Dan Hagan, I just wanted to kind of just talk real quick to some of what the board's discussion is, and just kind of generally. You know, we seem to have, we've had a pretty good process here, I think so far along, we've had pretty good discussions back and forth here, you know, from where the proposal started, we've made several amendments kind of along the way, and I think, based on really input from all sides, and I think we have it at a place where everybody can pretty well agree to, you know, on all sides of this issue, pretty well agree to the text that's there. And I just, I'm concerned about making too many more amendments, because again, I think we have a pretty good compromise now, and so, I think if we can all be pretty well agreed to the text as-is, you know, I'd like to see the board, you know, move this forward, assuming you guys can buy into the text as well. I think we have both parties here in agreement on what's in front of you today, so just so you know.
And I'm thrilled that everyone who was involved is on the same page now, but there are also people that aren't here, you know, obviously it impacts everyone in town, so we obviously have to, it's not quite, you know...
Sure, no, actually, I mean, the board has to be comfortable with it, too. I'm just saying that from at least a lot of stakeholders, where they are, everyone seems to be, you know, fairly comfortable at this point, as a good compromise point, so. By the way, I also have Tom Murphy here from Cumberland Farms, who, Tom, if you want to maybe speak just briefly on the issue, real quick, just to...
Sure, I, Tom Murphy, an attorney in Springfield, representing First Hartford, who is the proposed developer for Cumberland Farms on North Hampton Street. And I'm here to say that I've been to, I've been to your meeting before, and I've been to another meeting earlier today, and I was encouraged by the modifications that the Department has recommended, and the board hopefully has recommended, with regard to the highway business zone requirement, previous requirement for a convenient store to have a minimum of five acres. Obviously, by the modification which exempts convenient, excuse me, convenience stores from that obligation, it's very helpful for us, allows us to move forward, so we would encourage you to endorse the proposal in front of you, and appreciate any consideration you can give us. Thank you.
Thank you.
Well, I just wanted to add, you know, I made that comment a couple weeks ago, I haven't pushed it since, and the reason is because I do feel that we're making a lot of good progress in here. I feel it's a fairly small thing, and it was bigger for me before we had a lot of the changes in here. So, you know, bringing it up again, yes, 60 was sort of the number that I was targeting, but it's not really something I want to push for the changes we have.
I brought it up again, because I actually have similar feelings to you, that I wouldn't, I would be willing to approve 50, but I would be more comfortable if it was closer to 60 as well, but I'm curious to hear if there are other thoughts or opinions out there or here.
I have one. I mean, I think, as I started looking into this, you know, it became more apparent that buildings over 50,000 square feet, if the tenant that builds and occupies it vacates, become urban blight. And, you know, I think, and 50,000 square feet seems to be that number, like, over that, you're just, it's too specialized for anything else to move in without ripping it down.
Right.
And, and so, I mean, that's why I'm fully comfortable with 50,000 square feet. I mean, if you look at 50,000, we don't have, I mean, that's huge.
Yeah.
It's really big, for East Hampton. So, I'm fine with 50,000 square feet, and the research shows that buildings over 50,000 square feet are just useless. So...
What I am going to ask for, though, is, you had talked earlier, we kind of came to agreement with PUDS, planning development, a reduction to five acres. I'm going to ask you to consider a reduction to four acres, and I do have a piece of land that applies to me, but that's not why I'm asking, because I wouldn't have to do that.
So, that's one, we just went from 10 to 5?
Right. The reason I'm asking you to consider possibly four acres is basically 1 Fair East Street. I just think we need to be as flexible and creative as possible, and hoping to redevelop that someday, and that, you know, if my conversation stops today right now, it's fine with me, I'm not going to push it.
Wouldn't that be part of the exemptions?
No, well, I'm trying to allow for splitting up the parcel.
Yeah, so not redevelopment of the existing building, but that was my thought with the redevelopment question, is making sure that it's something that can be done.
Sorry, he doesn't mean over the 50, I think you're talking about lots of...
Right.
Yeah, unless somebody suggested change, I have other than that, in all honesty, you know, I came out hard against this at the beginning. I'm very happy with this. I would like you to make a motion soon to approve it, and with the City Council, as-is. Except for my little...
Mr. Ordinor?
Hi, thank you. Yeah, I just want to, I just wanted to add about 50,000 square feet, where that came from, and that came from definition for big box. The impetus for this proposal came from the master plan survey results. I just heard two board members mention what's best for the community. I think that the community expressed themselves through the master plan survey, if we, you know, were to act in the best interest, I feel, of the community, then the concerns of the community as expressed, 3,300 households that took the time to respond to the survey, to respond to those desires to not have big box in East Hampton. The definition for big box, I found definitions even from business communities, is more than 50,000 square feet, so I think it's a matter of recognizing the community that's not here. Like, they were here, they've already weighed in on this, in my view, this is why I brought this forward, and I think that if it makes no difference, 60,000 or 50,000, which, I think the difference of going greater than 50,000 means that by definition, we've exceeded a big box store, it really makes no difference adding another 10,000 feet, really, then staying at 50,000 feet satisfies the, in my opinion, the desires of the community as expressed through the master plan survey, and it seems like a pretty easy thing to do, really. Those people that are not here can read then how things were decided and say, you know, that's fantastic.
Very good thoughts.
I've got plenty, I'm not going to say it.
Okay. Anybody else here?
Yeah, other than the cap, which is 50,000 feet, which is fine, does it affect any more of 40R, and is that any part of it, or is it just a cap? I read the 125 pages, I understood about four of them, but the 40R seems pretty good for the residential, you put in mixed use that fits for the neighborhood. Has that been changed, Jessica?
The 40R language?
No, yes.
R40.
R40 language, I'm sorry.
Okay, thank you for the clarification on the confusion. What's the, I'm still confused, what's the question?
I see no change.
Yeah, not change.
It's, it's not residential, and the overlay, the overlay was done by 40R.
You're talking about 40R?
Yes.
Okay.
The overlay was done for the different zones in East Hampton. None of what we're doing now changes those, because there's all different rules for residential, there's different rules for highway residential.
40R is kind of like a standalone zoning document in its own way. It's not mandatory, it's an optional zoning...
Right.
...that a developer could do, and it has its own, it's a standalone document. It doesn't coincide with other pieces of the...
It doesn't pertain to this, then you're saying?
That's a good ques, I mean, I don't believe so, because the intent of the 40R language, it has to go through a state review process, and I'm not sure the state would have been favorable to putting a building cap on a 40R project.
So, on our 35 zoning...
Not, you're...
35 R zoning, whatever.
Okay, so, a residential zone?
It's residential zoning.
But that, but 40R is a standalone zoning. It doesn't, it has its own...
So, it's...
It's standalone, it's almost like a mini ordinance in its own section.
Into specific areas.
Right.
Into specific areas.
Which is up on the map over there, the blue and the green, and that's it.
Yeah, so...
Are you asking basically if it could be used to, which is unlikely to bypass the 50,000 square feet, you know, to go bypass the whole thing?
It doesn't even go up, it doesn't go up to having a...
It does not...
Nothing we're doing today touches the 40R.
Yeah.
No, but any change to the 40R would have to go to the state for approval to the DHCD, because that's the process for the 40R approval. It had to get approved by the state first before it even come for local adoption, so...
Thank you.
Does anybody else have any questions or comments? All right, any thoughts about the request to reduce the five acres further to four?
I'm amenable to it, I think that... And are we talking about just in the industrial, or the mill, mill industrial area?
Just in the P U D.
So, just in the MI?
Boy, industrial, wherever a P U D is allowed.
Yeah, so, well, it is allowed in mill industrial, and it's currently, now the amended is five acres, so I'm fine to change it in mill industrial to four.
Yeah, that's fine.
But leave it at five for downtown and highway business? I think that accomplishes the goal, considering that 1 Fair East Street is covered.
Yeah.
Good point.
Yeah, it's a good point.
Good catch.
What is the lot size, 1 Fair? Does anyone know?
It's good.
It was six...
I hear 13 acres is a lot, but I'm not quite sure.
I think the assessor showed it at six, 13 might include the October companies.
Okay, yeah.
But I think 1 Fair itself is just, it's a little over six, it's like six and a half.
All right, does anybody from the public have any comments on Mr. Boyle's proposal I made? Jim?
I would, I support that completely. I do, I support the four acres over...
I guess the only thing left is the 50 to 60 thing.
Well, yeah, I guess so. I mean, Harry, do you have any thoughts on that, or any larger thoughts about the impact on it?
I just sat back and thought about it the other day, about, everybody's so afraid of Walmart coming to East Hampton, we'll say, okay? The fact of the matter is, if Walmart opened their doors tomorrow and East Hampton, how many businesses in East Hampton would be affected?
Exactly.
How many would be affected? Because there's nothing on Cottis Street, there's nothing on Union Street, so where would it be affected in this city? You've got pizza joints, you've got Chinese foods, you've got hairdressers, you've got gas stations. If a Walmart came in, you could actually buy shoes, you could actually buy kids' clothes, your own adult clothes, shoes, and stuff like that, which is not available in the city at the time. I'm not saying it should be called a Walmart, I'm not in favor of Walmart, let me wrong, I'm just saying, everybody's so afraid of it, but a lot of cases, there's a lot of stuff they sell that's not being sold in East Hampton today.
And they used to have, most of that used to be in East Hampton, and they left because of the malls.
I don't know if you...
Harry's right, if a big box store comes in, and even if it's just 50,000 square feet, it's not going to affect any business in this city or town, because their services are different.
Well, I...
Hardware stores?
I think there's a lot of...
Possibly have a shot at match-up.
So, here's another angle on that. So, if Walmart opened its doors in East Hampton tomorrow, that, maybe, I disagree, I think it would affect a lot of different businesses in town, but I also think it would preclude other businesses looking to East Hampton to maybe provide some of those services that have a little bit more class, and are a little bit more socially responsible to the citizens of East Hampton. And now that we're looking at, you know, reducing lot size and making, you know, the zoning more amenable to movement in highway business, how do we know yet? You know, so, my personal thought is, let's see what this does, let's see what kind of businesses we can bring into town, maybe, before you know it, we'll have some businesses in town where we can buy stuff that have a little bit more, I guess, they're a little bit better for the community than Walmart might be.
Yeah, the only point I was trying to make was, that something like that come in the city, you could buy stuff you can't buy now, that's the only point I was trying to make.
Well, there's obviously things that they would carry that you can't get now. I do think that there would be an impact on a lot of local businesses.
So if Walmart opened its doors in East Hampton tomorrow, um, that, uh, maybe, I, I disagree, I think it would affect a lot of different businesses in town. But I also think it would preclude other businesses looking to East Hampton to maybe provide some of those services that have a little bit more class and are a little bit more socially responsible to the citizens of East Hampton. And, and now that we're looking at, you know, reducing lot size and, and making, you know, the zoning more amenable to movement in highway business, how, how do we know yet, you know? So, may, my personal thought is, let's see what this does, let's see what kind of businesses we can bring into town. Maybe, before you know it, we'll have some businesses in town where we can buy stuff that have a little bit more, um, I, I guess, they have, they're a little bit better for the community than Walmart might be.
Yeah, the only point I was trying to make was, that something like that come in the city, you could buy stuff you can't buy now. That's, that's the only point I was trying to make.
Well, there's obviously things that they would carry that you can't get now. I do think that there would be an impact on a lot of local businesses. I also think what Salem was mentioning before is a real concern, that if you have a seventy-five thousand foot building that leaves and closes down, you're left with something that is...
That's not even true. You can set, you can set conditions, you can put a bond on there, if they leave in a certain amount of years, therefore it's a tear it off. But what I looked at, someplace in California had the same problem. When they, okay, a monster store like that, they've drawn a bond, if they leave, they have the way to tear it down. So you can set conditions.
So then the city's involved with tearing down the building, we're having the lot, trying to...
All I'm saying is, you can tear it down.
Well, yeah, I, I, but I don't know if that's necessarily a business you wanna be in as the city of East Hampton.
I would like to also point out that a lot of Walmart's business practices include bringing in cheaper services. So, um, pharmaceuticals, um, eye, nails, haircuts, those are small businesses in East Hampton that would be affected. And Walmart also has a practice of, once the competing businesses go out of business, of then pulling that out of their store, which could, again, lead to a lot of other abandoned buildings in East Hampton, aside from the Walmart. I just had to include that, that it goes beyond the product, also services.
Yeah, very good. Yes.
Um, my parents own property in Ware, and live in Ware.
I'm sorry for the notes, can you just...
Oh, I'm sorry, I'm Susan Lever, I live at Twenty-Fifth Highland Avenue in East Hampton. They built a Walmart on the border of Palmer and Ware. It's killed what was coming into Ware. They literally killed it, because that Walmart also has a grocery store, it has a bank, it has now a real estate agent, and you can now order cars through Walmart. So, you gotta eat about, they have a real estate...
He struck a chord.
Yeah. They have, they have a real estate agency now that goes in there. They've got the bank, they've got their grocery store. They have the optometry people that sell the glasses. They've already, since Walmart's come in, the only business that has continually survived is Natbox, which is a clothing store, and, um, Auto Florist. Everything, they've lost restaurants, because the other bill, they've lost a Friendly's. You know, an anchor place in, in, and we're talking to a very similar makeup of community. Ware was a mill town, you know, East Hampton basically was a mill town. You know, I just think if you cap it at fifty, we're not gonna have to worry about something similar to Walmart coming in. And that's where I stand, only because I've seen what's happened in Ware.
How, how are the mills doing in Ware?
Hold on.
How are the mills up in Ware now?
They're not.
Excuse me, that's all right. Mr. Director?
I just wanted to build on something that Salem said, uh, that, um, when Dan and I came up with this proposal, the original proposal, it still looks somewhat like what we proposed. Uh, we, we're thinking in terms of the, the lot reduction was an important part, an important component of the proposal, to stimulate, uh, smaller, to encourage smaller development, smaller businesses, which I think East Hampton would very greatly benefit from. And so I, that is part of the proposal, and I, just building on what Salem said, seeing what happens as a result of these particular changes that are part of this package, uh, and seeing where that goes. I mean, you know, we can always come back later and say, well, okay, for whatever reason, I can't even imagine what it might be, but, like, okay, this isn't working, we need to change it to a hundred thousand feet, you know? But right now, I believe that, uh, there's already some interest that was generated from lot reductions associated with this, uh, before, just shortly after the proposal was out of the gate, and I think that that's really going to pan out, I really do.
Anybody else?
I'll put a final point, and, uh, for me, this is all about maintaining being classy and defining East Hampton as continuing to be something special. But there's a balance here. I would definitely wanna keep these kinds of big box, if we're gonna use that word, from defining us as something that we're not, be classy, but there's a balance where if it doesn't work, and we have great opportunities, I don't wanna lose them, which is why the number sixty for me seemed larger. I have to say at this point that I'm swayed, and I would vote for it now at fifty. There it is.
All right, well, do you want to get down to motion and votes, and give it a go?
Uh, I motion to approve the building size cap for retail uses.
I guess we're recommending it, right?
Recommending, so with...
Recommend it to City Council.
With the one further modification to move the planned unit development for mixed uses in industrial zoning only to four acres. Did I get it right, industrial?
Yes, industrial.
Mix industrial.
Mill industrial.
Mill industrial.
Yeah, sorry, is that mill industrial?
Next.
Anybody gonna second that? No?
I'll second that.
All right. All in favor?
Aye.
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 Opposed, oh, opposed, abstentions?
Is that a four?
A four.
A four.
I proposed a motion to move the recommendation on building cap size fifty thousand feet to the full City Council with the change to four acres as proposed for the...
Mill industrial.
Mill industrial.
Go ahead, second. Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, so when we get your recommendation, then we'll move forward, we'll let you press now, we're gonna take it up. Great, thank you.
Thank you, everybody.
Thanks, everybody.
Everyone.
So, when are you gonna send it to City Council?
Uh, we, we move as soon as we get the recommendation from them, we'll, I'll set the public hearing.
Very good.
Yep, so it should be...
It'll be set tomorrow.
So, I'll set it at the next meeting, so it'll be at the first meeting in June.
You have nothing else to do, so you're required.
All in favor?
All right.
I'm gonna miss you all.
I know. That's all right, we have some, we have some science stuff that we can work on. I think the way the ordinance is speaking, we have plenty to work on. Yeah. Being the flybaker. It's, uh, twenty-seven acres.
Close.
Or thirty-seven.
Five acres.
You're three and five acres.
Okay. All right, so, we're gonna, uh, can I get a motion to close the public hearing on the...
I motion to close the public hearing on the building size.
All in favor? Aye. No opposition or abstentions, all right. We, yeah, let's give it a minute.
If you're gonna have conversations, please have them outside, whenever meetings are going on.
No problem. Yeah. All right. All right. Folks, we got more stuff to do, so if you wanna chat in the hall?
Sue? Okay, they just have more...
We still got more stuff to do.
Thank you, guys.
Thank you.
Thank you. That would be excellent. All right. Our last item is the priority list for the Master Plan Implementation Committee. I don't know if we wanna...
Jim is not here, right?
Put that off until at least Jim is back, but also Libby, Libby seemed to have some interest in that, it's a pretty... I mean, I spent some time going through the, the list for the master plan.
Can I direct you to the, to the top twenty-five, in the beginning of the plan?
Yeah.
Right.
The forty members of the Master Plan Committee spent an entire night going through all, they had all of the recommendations. The process was, they had a vote for, they had a vote for, I think, at least one to two recommendations that was not in the chapter that they had spent their entire year on. They had to go to look at the other chapters, they had to nominate ones, and then...
What a good system.
Yeah.
Was that your idea, Jim?
Yeah. And then they had to, you know, put up dots for, once the first round went up, then people had dots and they prioritized. And so based on that, I mean, it was forty member committee that prioritize all of those recommendations, so that the next step is that you could just move off that list of twenty-five. I mean, that was the whole point, was to set that up, so that you didn't have to do a lot of extra work to, to kick it off. So, I would encourage you to focus, it's in the beginning of the plan, I can send it out again if you want me to.
Not necessarily the plan, but will you, or just tell, just, uh, email, so that, I'm sure James knows, but in case he doesn't, and it's for Libby, and so we don't run afoul of the meeting, if you could just point everybody to that?
And what I'll do is, um, I'll also, um, I'll use, I'll use PDF and I'll make notations of ones that have already been adopted. Like, number one recommendation was forty R, we'll give adopt that, so it's done. So I can try, you know, I, I did it with the Master Plan Committee in the very beginning of the process, we went through that list and, but it, you know, that was several years ago.
Those notes were handed off to him, so I don't know, I think it's a good idea.
But I think we should do that, and then the planning board decides from that list of twenty-five, what you want the Master Plan Committee to work on.
Now, on that list of twenty-five, well, when I went through the master plan, there probably could be more, but on that list of twenty-five, are we prioritizing, are we saying that we want the top ten?
My, my thought, we hadn't decided that.
I, I think...
I thought we were making, from what it says, a priority.
I would do a very short list. I think that a committee, what I saw, what I saw in Hadley is, it took them almost two years to get one item completed.
Yeah.
So I think that you give the committee one or two items.
Yeah.
And then from there, they can focus all of their energy on those one and two items, and they can, you know, bounce back and forth if something gets stalled, and they've got at least something else to start working on, so, but I wouldn't overburden the committee.
I was, that's what, what I was trying to get to, how many do we give them? Now, we have our members, now, we're supposed to pick, uh, a number, say, two or three, the most. And then, we all get together here and mention what we prioritize ourselves. And then, are we trying to match the other members and then pull those?
Yeah, my thought about this is that if we each come up with, you know, two or three items, we can come next time, we can talk about all of them and try to agree on two or three items to give them to start with. I mean, realizing that the goal is obviously to get all twenty-five and more, so you can, obviously, if they knock things off the list or if they hit a brick wall, we can supplement that list, and nothing's getting voted out of the master plan. But if we can try to get, you know, the five or six of us to narrow it down to two or three items to then give to a committee, then I think they'll have clear marching orders, and we can help them with feedback and revising their list as it is needed.
And I think your point, your point about recruitment is valid, because when you give them clear goals, instead of it just being the master plan, you'll get people in the community, well, I wanna be a part of that goal, and I think it'll be easier to bring people on.
But I'm sure that between the five or six of us, we'll all come up with probably the same items.
I don't want the same ones, but I'm hoping there's some overlap.
One of the things the committee did do, there were, there was an energy committee and a transportation committee, and we worked to put together, I think it was the energy committee, with my, and that was a success that the committee had, and I know the transportation one is still lingering out there.
I think it's tough unless there, unless there's an actual transportation project, you know what I mean? Unless there's some item that people need to rally around.
Yeah.
The fact of the matter is, is that, you know, between DPW and planning, we know what the transportation priorities are, and we have representation on the PDTA, um, the financial director represents East Hampton, and so we've got our finger on the pulse in terms of public transit. There's only so much we can do, because transportation dollars are so scarce, that there isn't really much that could happen, so I'm not sure if that really makes sense anymore, given the...
Well, so that, I mean, that kinda insight will be helpful, though, when we come back with our priorities, for you to sort of give us some guidance on what is or isn't worth spending energy on. But my, I, I'm hoping, Chad, that if we all come in with three items, that there'll be enough. I mean, they're all good things, so, you know, frankly, you guys can pick the three, if, if I don't disagree, if I don't agree with them. I mean, I think they're all, you know, good goals, so hopefully we can find some easy ground.
Well, I'm sure, being able between all of us, at least find three items.
Yeah, that's what I think. So I'm upping my stakes.
And that, we'll just leave it at three.
But I think Libby...
Just like I said, we don't wanna overburden.
I think Libby will have some good insight, and I definitely want you here, since it's the committee. So, I think it makes sense to continue that, I don't know, do we need a motion to continue this? No, okay, it's administrative, yeah. All right, so, any other administrative items, guys?
Do you want me to add it to the next meeting's agenda?
Yeah, let's add it.
Yeah, why don't we do that?
I'd like to move on.
We'll have, we'll have enough time to pick three items.
Now, it's interesting, Jim is, uh, he's been coming to a lot of meetings, but he's, um, an alternate, does he plan on, does he let you know that he's coming, or did he not?
Yes, he did.
Okay.
Both he and Libby learned.
Okay.
I'll do a form check before I begin meeting.
Can I bring something up that we didn't have any agenda for tonight?
Yes.
Sure.
Something's been kinda festering on me a little bit.
Uh-oh.
I'm not sure I'm gonna start this.
I'm going to the bathroom.
Do we need to go to executive session?
Should we go off camera?
No, no.
No, you shouldn't.
It was a joke.
We gave, the, the planning board gave a permit for the brewery on that Poor Hill Road.
Yeah.
Okay?
That was, went before us, right?
Yeah. So they set certain conditions, parking had to be in the back, the guy couldn't sell it, he could, he could brew it, and he could give samples.
Right, tastings.
And that was it. Neighborhood was happy, he was happy, everybody's happy. Three years later, now we got cars parked out in the plaza and the side and everywhere else, we got a band up there on Saturday afternoons, and a guy's selling his stuff. What I wanna know is, if the planning board sets conditions, from my understanding, he's got a pouring license on, because he's got a brewing license, all of a sudden that makes him eligible for pouring license. But how would that affect the parking? So if this guy goes to the licensing board, in all their wisdom, why, why, why shouldn't they make sure this guy has to have the same parking that we, part of our permit? Why should that change? He may, they may give him a license to sell beer, but he still has, the parking still has to be adhered to, as far as I know, am I wrong?
No, you're correct, I mean, the, right now, he's supposed to have twenty spaces, um...
One of the things, one of the things that I heard is that was granted, is that it was increased to twenty during your planning board meeting, as, in the hope to give, that he would have enough. It was originally two-fue, and I find that a little ironic, that now you're holding it at twenty, when it was increased to twenty, to, to make sure he had enough. And the intent from that decision, to me, seems to be enough to get the job done. I mean, there's obviously plenty of space there.
Yeah, I'm not saying, look, I'm not against Poor Hill Brewery, I'm always saying, the only point I'm trying to bring up here is, if we set conditions on a project, how can we get overruled?
Well, I think there was a communication, or there is a communication breakdown between licensing and planning board, at least in this instance, but...
And I had a conversation with the mayor and the, um, and the staff in the mayor's office that oversees the licensing board agenda, and, um, you know, made it clear that there needs to be a better communication between planning board and the decisions, and, you know, they receive, the mayor's office receives copies of all the decisions for any permit that we have. I give copies of this. I'm sorry, I'm just, I...
We made them very heavy.
I give copies of the decisions to all of the, all of the boards and departments that commented on it, so the fire department, the health agent, the building inspector, um, conservation commission, city engineer. Everybody gets a copy, as well as the mayor's office. So, but I'm, I'm not CC'd on, but I could, just like any member of the public, go on the website and look at the agendas. But I had asked in the past to just be sort of kept in the loop with agendas, just because if we're dealing with economic development issues from the planning department, it's, I'd like to have my finger on the pulse of what's happening from the licensing side. And so, so I think we're gonna, you know, there's gonna be an effort to try to be better about that. We do have this online permitting system that's supposed to be coming online. My hope is that, I don't know, I think they are, but the licensing permits will be, also be in the system, and so hopefully that'll give me an opportunity to be able to look at things, and, and then I can pull the decision and say, you know, this is what the decision says, the liquor board needs to be aware of that. The liquor board is really parent, you know, my understanding is, they're worried about what their permit, which is like any other board. You know, they're only gonna be looking at what they're sort of allowed to be permitting on. I don't know enough about licensing board to really comment on how they conduct their business, I've never been to one of their meetings. But if there was no reason, similar to how, you know, you with a special permit, if there was no reason for them to deny the, the porous permit based on the information that they have or the rules or the regulations of what they need to do to grant a porous permit...
Doesn't take parking into consideration.
I'm not sure if it does, but... How do I phrase this? The applicant still needs to abide by those conditions. I, I called the A B C C to try to figure out jurisdiction in terms of if a state permit trumps a local one, and that's not... in terms of if a state permit trumps a local one, and that's not necessarily the case. The local permit still holds its water, even if he's granted the liquor license. So even if he's granted this pours permit, now, when I called the ABCC, there's a specific license called a pub license. So we made a determination, the mayor and myself, that the pub license, because we don't have a definition of what a pub is in our zoning, that I'm going to rely on the state's definition of what a pub is. And at this point, he does not have a pub.
And that was prohibited.
Because a pub license allows the selling of other people's beer.
Right.
In addition to being able to serve food and all of this other stuff. It's a much bigger, intense, and he would not be allowed to produce wholesale if he had a pub. So, so he wouldn't want to get a pub under the business model that he has right now.
All right, so. How would that affect, who gives the occupancy? I mean, how many people can he have there?
Well, see, this is, I think this is an interesting point. I mean, these are where the codes all sort of overlap. So you've got a building code that, based on the square footage of the building and the sprinkler and all of the other stuff that they need to under building code, he's going to give a certain number. And then the planning board has certain standards. And then the health permit has certain standards. And it's often, sometimes those things come into conflict.
I don't think we did, but occupancy.
You didn't, you didn't set any-
But there's a fire.
You didn't set any hours of operation. So, you know, he may be saying, I'm only open here. The neighbors are saying bullshit, you know, people are there. But there's no, you can't enforce that on the city side because there was nothing in the decision that said anything about hours of operation. It just said, these are the things that he's going to be-
Even if he's going to open lots, hours are still certainly ridiculously small.
The hours he's doing.
And his license, his pours license allows him to pour until 1:00 AM.
Right.
The lights, the number, there's hours of how he can pour on that permit.
I mean, the issues really are, and I think you're right, because a big flag for me too, were the parking, that's a big one. The noise, the issues too, and we're not really deliberating on this, but we're having a conversation here.
Right, it's all the conservation, that's all it is.
The traffic, and as described, drunken traffic, you know, the crosswalk. These are all things that-
They're alleged.
Alleged, yes.
But there are also legal issues that, I mean, he can't, I mean, concerned citizens, whether they're neighbors or not, can call the police, can file a report.
Exactly.
So that part of it is enforcement, not by us, but by these-
That should be, we mentioned it to them, that that's, they're right, that if they feel something's wrong, they can call the police.
So I think there was some licensing board issues, but I think one of the lessons from it also is, you know, making sure that our decisions and our deliberations involve specific terms if we want them to. If we're dealing with hours of operation, we shouldn't just not address it because it's in the application. We should determine whether it should be in there and included in our decisions.
Right, because, you know, this is a perfect example of when other staff have moved on, other board members have moved on, and the only piece, the only piece of paper that I have to know what happened in that meeting is that decision. That's it.
Yeah.
So, you know, it only talks, it talks about a very small amount of information. That's why, you know, we've worked really hard to beef up our decisions. We, I don't send you the decisions file, but I mean, I probably should. But we take every single one of those items, one through twelve, or whatever it is, on the special permit, and we address each one of them individually and reference what the findings are of the board for each one of those items. So when you deliberate, it's really important for you to deliberate on every single one of those items and to have a discussion about every single one of those items. Because if the decision then shows that the board never deliberated on a certain item, you could be in legal trouble.
Yeah, that's why even some of the things that look pretty obvious from the application or something we're trying to bring up.
Yeah, right.
You just have to bring up, yeah, there's no wetlands issues here. There's no, you know, there's no issues in regards to landscaping. You know, just to say it, so that I can say in the decision, the board found that, you know, that there are no issues in regards to wetlands.
Is our, is our personal Google system for all information and planning, I think we really need to get a scribe back in here to-
We're working on it, we've got a couple interviews set up.
Okay, good.
Yep.
But say, say the neighbors really got ticked off, and they called the police.
Yeah.
Now, how do the police know what the conditions are, what the hours and the parking?
Well, they're only gonna, they're only gonna enforce what, I mean, it's-
Wait, how do they know?
They'll only address what they see then.
How do they know? How do they know what they're looking?
This is what I told some of the neighbors this week who came to my office to talk to me about this. I said, you can certainly, you have the right to write a letter to the building inspector saying that you believe that the parking condition is being violated. Call the cops when it happens. Then you have a police record of the call and of the information that's there. Have them do a head count of how many cars are in the lot. Then there's evidence, or there's some piece of paper that the building inspector can go off on. The building inspector's not in town on Saturday night. I'm not going to drive down to Fort Hill on my Saturday night when I'm with my family. You know, I'm sorry.
Or you won't be working if you're there.[1611.75]